I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,087. It is December 8, 2014. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy.
Present.
Kim.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Okay. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Hope everyone's holiday season got off to a great start. The first thing on the agenda here would be approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from November 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes. Very good. Motion carries. Next, we have public commentary. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the board at this time? No? Nobody? Okay. We'll close the floor. That takes us to presentations and awards. None this evening, nor public hearings. That takes us to my report, the mayor's report. And we have a few motions, but first, just go over a few items here. Now, let's see. First, all right, leaf collection program. It ended today. Got this from Mr. Flynn. "The crews finished their last pass through town on Monday, December 8, today. The leaf collection program is now over. Group crews conducted ten passes through town over the six-week collection period. The program officially ended November 5, but group sent a crew out today to pick up isolated piles that had been blocked by cars or inadvertently missed on Friday. At this point, there will be no further collections this year." I think last year, Mr. Flynn, I think you said we had like about four passes, simply because it started so late, leaves came down so fast near the end, that every pass took several days. And so, I don't know if you want to comment more. That's kind of the gist of it, though, correct?
That's the gist of it. We had a good -- the leaves cooperated this year. They were very well behaved, and so it got done extremely well.
Yeah, I think last year was just a statistical anomaly. Let's hope that doesn't happen again for a long, long time. Okay. Wanted to just give kudos to our staff, our public works staff, for all the great Christmas lights and holiday lights that have been, you know, hanging around town on the lamp posts. Something new this year is up on 45, oh, let's see, south of Dunbar, north of Edgemont. There's some trees there that are now lit up. That's brand-new. We brought electricity over to that side, and there's some trees that are lit that haven't been lit before, so that's nice. And then, of course, out here, if you can go by Village Hall, you'll see all the lights. I think it's just a wonderful job you guys have done. Also, we have a Christmas tree in our lobby, and I wanted to give kudos to the folks that did that. Trustee Abernathy, and then DeShawn Cox back here, thank you so much. If, folks, if you were to come by and look at the Village Hall lobby, you would see this Christmas tree here. It looks like it belongs in a magazine. I mean, honestly, it is so well-done. Thank you very much for adding that to our Village Hall lobby there. Okay. I think we're good. Let's continue. All right, here we go. There's a mayoral proclamation. This is in your packet. And this is, if you were to read it, it's the National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month, naming December as the National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month. And this is because during holidays like this, there's more drunk driving, there's more impaired driving from drugs, and it's something that we just need to be aware of. And I would just, you know, just relay this story. When I went to Europe years ago on business, something that they have that we don't have, they have laws there that say you can't, not only can you not drive when you're drunk, you cannot drive with any alcohol in your system at all, not even an iota. And so, whenever you go out, you know, eating or drinking, every group you see will have a designated driver. It's just a way of life there. And so, I think if we could just be aware that we're kind of different from the rest of the world, or at least, you know, Europe compared to us, much more strict. Of course, I think they drive a bit quicker on the Audubon than we do, but that doesn't matter. We need to be careful, folks, and treat December with a bit more awareness. So I need a motion for the mayor and village clerk to sign the National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month proclamation.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Sullivan. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is a resolution for a special meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. This will be on December 15 to take care of a few items of business. We will hear from the county board chairman, Aaron Lawler, regarding the 53 extension. And then, we have a small item of business regarding a business that's moving into the Anatole Building. So I need a motion to adopt a resolution scheduling a special meeting of the Village, Moonline Village Board of Trustees for December 15, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Voss. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries. Finally, on my report is a resolution canceling the board meeting scheduled normally for December 22, 2014. Need a motion to adopt a resolution canceling that Village Board meeting for December 22, 2014.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Is staff working that day? They are?
Yes.
Okay. And we're not going to reschedule to have one to make up for that?
We did, next week, the 15th.
It's back to the 15th.
Oh, so the 15th is going to be a Village Board meeting as well, not only just a committee of a whole?
You just said that.
It's a Village Board meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
This is meeting.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now, at this point, instead of moving on to trustee reports, all right, I think we have a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting. And so, and this is for a sign variation consideration. So, at this point, get this right, we need a motion to recess the regular meeting into a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Voss. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. So now, this would become trustee Voss's meeting? Okay?
So I'm going to give the clerk a second?
Well.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Are we here? Are we up here? Okay. Not, not, not many. Um, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so can you please take attendance?
Voss.
Yeah, here.
Semple.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Thank you. So tonight, we are here to discuss a sign variation for Dunkin' Donuts BP at 700 East Route 45. They are requesting several variances to allow for additional signage for the Dunkin' Donuts. Is a petitioner here? Okay. So, I got a ton of paper on this, sorry. So basically, you're requesting additional signage to have appropriate signage for the Dunkin' Donuts. And you are not losing, you're not losing any of the BP signage. The two monument signs will be changed to allow for additional BP signage. They are roughly the same size as the existing monument signs? No, they're much bigger than the, much bigger than, okay. So, um, the variations requested for this site include a variation to allow more than a directional at each entrance exit, a variation to allow more than two total signs on the property, one ground sign and three wall signs, a 44 square, 44-square-foot menu board will be included on the site, and two BP logos on the canopy, a variation to allow more than one wall sign when a ground sign is present, the canopy will also display two logo signs, a variation to allow the square footage for signs to exceed 100 square feet for wall signs plus ground signs for a total of 255 square feet, and a variation to allow ground sign to exceed 50 square feet for a total of 131 square feet. The sign code that we're drafting would eliminate the need for most of these variations, though there would still be a need for a variation because of the size of the ground signs. There are four businesses at this location that are being signed for, is that right? BP, Dunkin' Donuts, something else? Wait, wait.
Convenience.
The, so there's three?
And the car wash.
Oh, and the car wash is four. Okay. So there are four businesses, and that is why there are so many requests for variance. Does anybody, does anyone on the committee have a question?
No, it's real clear in the package and all the paper we have.
Okay. Does any of the, anyone else on the board have any questions of the petitioner?
I do.
Or staff? Go ahead.
My question is, what in our new sign ordinance will still need a variation? If we adopt our new sign code, will these variations still be needed?
Okay, so first of all, if we do it now, they're grandfathered in.
They'd be grandfathered in. I get that, but what I'm saying is...
The only one would, would be the ground signs are big enough that they would still need a variance on the new sign code. All the other ones would not require variance, if I'm wrong?
Potentially.
Okay.
That part, the ground signs are actually still under review. That's something that staff and we met with the consultant. We said that we wanted to have them take another look at it, especially because there seems to be an imbalance on like the bigger commercial corridors and the need for variances currently for the 50-square-foot requirement. So that could change. We don't know what that number looks like yet. We haven't seen it.
So it's possible they wouldn't need any variances?
It's possible, but not certain.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, oh, sorry, Ed.
I see on the elevations in the plan that there's a drive-up window.
Mm-hmm.
Evidently, that's on the east elevation. But when I look at the site plan, I'm not seeing how ingress and egress from the drive-up window is made.
Trustee Sullivan, you enter the site through the normal car wash entrances, and then you can enter the drive-thru on the south side of the building. They're adding a new drive-thru lane that goes around the south side to the east of the building, and then exits at the north side of the building. And so that, they're going to do some extensive work there.
So, the driveway's not on this, this plan?
That, it may not be on the, that's the plat, I believe, so...
Okay, so it's not the...
Yes, it's not on that one. It's on SP1.
Here.
Oh, I think it, I'll keep looking. And you have a four-car stack? All right, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, now are we good? So, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of sign variations for Dunkin' Donuts/BP at 700 East Highway 45.
Second.
If you, thank you.
Voss.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we can make that recommendation during my portion of the regular board meeting. So with that, oh, do we have public commentary? It's not on my agenda. Okay, well, look, there's no public commentary. It works out well. Oh, well, I just did. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this? Do, no, okay. So, can we just, are we, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
All right.
Sorry. Hang on, let's back.
Ready? Okay, at this point, we need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Very good. And we are now at the point in the village board meeting for trustee reports. We go to Public Works Committee. Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I have several motions to make related to the Archer Avenue improvements, change order, and final payment. And so, the first motion would be a motion to approve change order number one to the Archer Avenue construction project, increasing the contract value in the amount of $71,839.35 and authorize the village engineer's signature on change order number one.
Second the motion.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Discussion? Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. This increase in the contract price as a result of contaminated soils, I guess two questions. What was the type of contamination? And were we aware of this at all in the environmental due diligence that we accomplished when we purchased the Sigma property?
This is along Archer Avenue, so it's independent of the Sigma property.
It's not the border of the Sigma property.
Right. And this is something that you're going to see become a very pressing issue for us on road projects as we move forward because of the recent changes in legislation on clean construction debris disposal, specifically with our road projects. In this instance, the issue really came about through the testing that Weston did and the comprehensive testing that Weston did. Since they're an environmental firm, they provided the, the analysis that covered just about everything on the EPA TACO list versus just the ones we needed to test for. And what ended up coming up as contaminated was a higher-than-residual level of manganese, naturally occurring element, manganese.
Manganese?
Yes. And that allowed the disposal sites to say, we can reject this based on this residual, little higher-than-residual value. If we had not tested for it at all, we would not have been in violation whatsoever, and we would have been able to dispose of it as we saw fit.
Was it really as a result of our due diligence?
Yes.
We had to go to that expense. Manganese. Was this something that had to be excavated out?
Yes, it was part of the road cut.
For the reconstruction? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The second motion, also related to the Archer Avenue construction project, is a, I'd like to make a motion to approve and issue a purchase order in the amount of $71,839.35 to Burger Excavating Contractors, Inc., for the Archer Avenue construction project.
Motion by Meyer.
Second the motion.
Second by Semple. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And the last motion I'd like to make tonight is a motion to make payment for final pay request to Burger Excavating Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $189,208.91 for the Archer Avenue construction project.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that would be all I have for tonight unless we want to bring up what we talked about earlier? Okay. We did have a public works committee meeting earlier related to stormwater management and that. So, other than that, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Next up, finance committee, a number of items. We're going to be busy here. Trustee Sullivan.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have some motions, and the first is to deal with the reallocation of our volume camp for private activity bonds. This is in the amount of $3,124,900. This comes from the state of Illinois, and we have to use it or allocate it. And what we're planning to do is allocate it to a clearinghouse by the Village of Buffalo Grove for the Lake County Partners, which will give it a three-year life so that it can be designated. If it, if it is allocated to someone's use, we will receive 5 percent, or .5 percent of that, some $15,000, for that, that privilege. So the motion is to pass an ordinance authorizing the reallocation of the 2014 volume camp for private activity bonds to the private activity bond clearinghouse hosted by the Village of Buffalo Grove for Lake County Partners. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Abstained.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
This evening, on your omnibus agenda, you'll see a motion to pay bills for this period totaling $2,265,679.16. This, on a historical basis, is a whopping amount of bills to pay. However, more than half of it is in regard to the principal and interest payments on three bond issues. Those principal and interest payments total $1,496,468.76. We also are going to make a down payment on records management. I believe this is a police department fund of $45,000. We're going to pay CDW for Microsoft licensing of $58,376.50. Lake Michigan Water will cost us $174,230.20. And we have two bills to pay Rossboro Partners. This is a firm that has...
Well, why did we say that we were gonna levy this amount and then not levy this amount?
Are we not preserving our options to levy the full amount?
The bondholders want to get repaid their money that they loaned us.
Yes, but so why don't we just give them this amount? One million, ten thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven, fifty. Why are we giving it back? We're abating it back to taxpayers. We're giving it back to the taxpayers, right?
We're levying less than needed. We're not giving them back.
Okay, so this is on next year's. We're saying we're gonna levy, for example, twelve million dollars. Oh, but wait, wait, wait. We're really only gonna levy eleven million dollars, and we just have to break it out differently? Break it out so that people can see that? I mean, I'm just trying to get how we could explain this to someone.
We're using other monies like sales taxes to pay back these bonds, not... We're just levying less than what we told, what we're required to levy.
But again, so if we don't need this money to pay these bonds, why don't we just make our levy be eleven million instead of twelve million? Why do we have to levy it and then give it back?
Let me take a shot at it maybe a little bit differently. I think the way you look at this is the bondholders want certainty that they're going to be paid back. And the only certainty we have is that we have the ability to tax our property owners for the full amount, not a partial amount. So, we go and issue bonds for the full amount under the full faith and credit of the village that we're going to exercise our authority to levy taxes sufficient to pay back those bondholders. And then, we say, however, and I can't remember the reasons, but we said, "We're not gonna levy the whole amount. We're gonna abate some of that. And we're not gonna take it from our taxpayers. We're gonna take it from our other general revenues that we receive." But if all of that goes away, all of these other revenues go away, at a minimum, I can levy taxes to pay back those bonds. That's what the bondholders want assurance on.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps or hurts, but...
I don't know. We'll see if anybody else has any questions.
Claire's mud now.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next motion is one to approve our levy for the current year, beginning May 1st, 2014, and ending April 30th, 2015. This in the amount of twelve million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. And I will make that motion to pass an ordinance.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Trustee Meyer. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next motion is a motion to pace a group of bills, a number of bills totaling nine thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents to AT&amp;T. This has been removed from the bill list because I believe we will have an individual who would like to abstain. And I will make this motion to pay AT&amp;T a total of nine thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Boss. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstained.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This evening, on your omnibus agenda, you'll see a motion to pay bills for this period totaling two million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents. This on a historical basis is a whopping amount of bills to pay. However, more than half of it is in regard to the principal and interest payments on three bond issues. Those principal and interest payments total one million, four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. We also are going to make a down payment on records management. I believe this is a police department fund of forty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna pay CDW for Microsoft licensing, fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Lake Michigan Water will cost us one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and twenty cents. And we have two bills to pay Rossboro Partners. This is a firm that has constructed our retaining wall out behind us. This is an amount of forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. And also Rossboro for the landscaping, I believe on the west side of this building, nine thousand, seven-hundred and fifty dollars. Unless anyone has a question or comment that we can receive, that completes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Moving on to the Public Safety Committee. Trustee Simple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the agenda for the Public Safety Committee meeting, we have a committee, Public Safety Committee report, which is a motion to approve the Public Safety Committee minutes. And, Madam Clerk, we just have one brief minor change to the minutes. When I held the public meeting last week, I inadvertently omitted the public commentary portion from the very beginning of the committee meeting. But we did open the floor at the very end, and you'll see right before the public commentary section should be inserted right above the very last point where Chairman Simple recognized Kay Dickman from CERT. Dickman spoke in favor of starting the K-9 unit. So, I just kind of juggled around the public commentary section. And that was totally my fault because this is kind of a new thing we're doing in the committee meetings as far as public commentary. So, I blew it, and we'll fix it right here. Other than that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Public Safety Committee meeting minutes from November 24th, as amended.
Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the sale of our old ladder truck. I'll make the motion here, and then we'll have Chief Sash go kind of tell us what we're doing. With that in mind, I'm gonna make a motion to pass an ordinance authorizing the sale of a 1995 Pierce ladder truck to the Grayslake Fire Protection District, 160 Holly Street, Grayslake, Illinois, for the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Motion by Simple, second by Boss. Go ahead.
Chief, you want to tell us what we're doing here?
Just briefly, we brought it to the board's attention that we solicited pricing on the vehicle based on market value. And it was established that sixty-five thousand dollars was the highest amount we could get as far as an asking price. And the Grayslake Fire Protection District, in partnership with College of Lake County, offered to pay us that asking price. And so, it was a good deal for us, and it's gonna be sold.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chief.
No lemon clause?
It's already been delivered to him, so... That's right. We threw in the floor mats, too, so... That's right.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries.
Chief Sashco, I know you had a busy time since our most recent board meeting. Want to summarize anything you guys did or have coming up before our next meeting?
Just thanks to the community, we had a blood drive, our holiday blood drive on Saturday. We had eighty-six units collected, which was outstanding. Most of the drives that occurred before that, in and around the area, really didn't do very well this year. So, there was about a forty percent drop-off on donations. And so, I'm very proud of... Our community is unbelievable. I mean, the faces are becoming commonplace now that show up to each of these. And it's really wonderful that they support that because this is the time of the year where it's really tough. And the hospitals are under heels trying to get blood. And, you know, time doesn't stop. Illness doesn't stop. So, really outstanding job with that. The other thing is that we have the Keep the Wreath Red program started already. That started December 1st. There's lit wreaths in front of each of the stations. And if we change one of the red bulbs to white, that means we had a holiday-related fire. And so far, so good. And we've had, I think, the last five years straight, we have not had any holiday-related fires. So, we're really happy that the community takes that seriously. And just a reminder with the use of real trees, there's a lot of them, you know, for sale around the area. St. Andrews has them, a couple other places. Just care and custody of those. There are fire retardants that are on the market that save your money. It's not worth the $27.95 to buy. They don't work. They actually dry the tree out faster. So, good old keep them watered. And we will have tomorrow, we'll have a... There's a little concoction that you can put into a natural tree base, more than just water, that helps keep the tree a little bit more resilient. So, that's it.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Gunther, you had a busy couple weeks, too, between your shop with a cop and turkey handouts and all that. You want to go over a few things?
Yes, our turkey handout went very well. It was very successful. I thank everybody on the board that participated in that. And we had our spaghetti dinner this last Friday, which, again, was overwhelmingly successful, so much so that we had to sit Indian-style on the ground because we ran out of tables and chairs. But that was a good thing. And Shop with a Cop actually is this weekend, on Saturday. It will be at Target. It starts at 7:00. And that's it. Yep. That's it.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody have any other questions for either one of the chiefs while we're here?
Okay. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the Community and Economic Development Committee report by Trustee Boss.
Thank you. I have a couple of things on my agenda. The first thing is that, for those who might have a really bad memory, a half an hour ago, we had a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting where we had a motion to recommend approval of a sign variance. So, I don't have that on my agenda, but don't we normally do that now?
Yes.
So, I will make a motion to recommend approval of a sign variance for Dunkin' Donuts BP at 700 East US Highway 45, as we discussed a half an hour ago.
Well, actually, let me... We authorized us to draft...
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to recommend
Yes.
staff drafting ordinance approving a sign variation for Dunkin' Donuts BP at 700 East US Highway 45, as we discussed a half an hour ago.
Second.
Motion by Boss?
Thank you.
Second by Abernathy. Any discussion on that? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And then, for you guys, then, that'll come back to us in two weeks. Okay. Thank you. The next thing up is... Oh, it'll come up in January 8th? 12th? Whenever. It'll come up in January. A motion to authorize the village administrator's signature on an application for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Village Board to consider certain text amendments to the zoning ordinance. We need to authorize staff to do this, though what is in our packet in terms of text amendments aren't exactly clear and done yet. So, it's a little bit of fluidity still. I'll make that motion.
Motion by Boss?
I'll second it.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Meyer.
When I was reading through this, when the area that you're talking about, impervious surface, and it looks like the new definition says it includes, but it's not limited to, and it identifies a variety of different things, I kind of questioned a little bit where we're talking about driveways, concrete, brick pavers. Though, I think that that's too broad a category because all of those things can be built with pervious surfaces. I mean, you have pervious concrete, brick pavers, depending on how they're set up, whether they're set up right next to each other, or whether there's space and gapping. I mean, I think it's a little bit too broad because those surfaces can be pervious in many instances.
Well, we're gonna vet that through this process. We're gonna be coordinating with our engineering department and see if there's any credits that can be applied to that. So, what we're just presenting is just what we have at this point in draft stages. When we go through the public comment portion of it, there'll be additional comments. And again, when this comes before the Village Board, these matters will be a lot more refined.
Okay, yeah, because my concern was that it kind of locks it in stone where a lot of these surfaces can be pervious.
Understood.
I also had some questions about some of the other verbiage, which is why I said this isn't the final verbiage. It's a little bit in flux right now.
Exactly. This is just in very, very draft form.
Anybody else?
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, next up is an ordinance requiring a business license for medical cannabis dispensaries and cultivation centers and setting rather large license fees for those businesses. And I had asked staff to give us some information about a normal business license for a business in town is twenty-five to fifty dollars? Yes? Okay. And why they thought that a larger license was required, they said, in their mind, it was similar to a liquor license. And so, those liquor licenses are from a thousand to...
In this case, the highest is thirty-five hundred.
Okay. And in speaking earlier with Trustee Abernathy, she remembers going to the Illinois Municipal League Conference and being told that the state says that municipalities can't charge more for medical dispensaries, cannabis dispensaries, than they charge to another business. So, could... I have some clarification about how this works?
Yeah, Trustee Abernathy mentioned the same thing to me. I can't speak to what they said at the conference. I just know that our attorney's reviewed the ordinance and has given it a thumbs up. So, to specifically answer that question, I would have to go back to our attorney and ask him to look again, but...
So...
It was... I'm sorry, it was Smith &amp; Louden's office.
So, did we... So, we haven't asked them whether, in fact, we can do this?
We didn't know it was a question. We just looked at it in terms of what the rules are for the state and passed an ordinance that's consistent with the state regulations.
Okay, so the state regulations that you have seen don't say that you have to charge the same amount as any other business?
My assumption is that it doesn't say that because it's not drafted that way. I just... I don't know if that question was asked, but I know that our legal counsel is aware of what the state law is.
And do we also charge liquor licenses a non-refundable application fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
Yes.
No, we don't. But that's what... Not... It is refundable on liquor, but that came because that's what the board decided to charge video gaming. So, that's equal to video gaming. In video gaming, the board passed an ordinance that required a non-refundable application fee annually. So, we kept that the same.
But, okay, so, just so I get this. So, basically, what we're doing is we're charging the medical cannabis dispensaries the highest amount that we can charge compared to any other business because we can. Do I have this right?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
We charged it because of the impact that it's gonna have on our resources. Just like liquor license, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee came about because of the background checks and the different verifications we have to do through the application process. And the reason that the application fee is due every year is because there are different... Things can change in a year's time that would disqualify somebody from being able to retain that license. So, that's number one. So, there is more resources spent in our police department on that. And then, the business license was selected because it was... The amount was selected because it, too, is most similar to liquor licenses in that whenever you introduce the sale of alcohol, whether it's packaged liquor or it's the sale of alcohol on premises, oftentimes, there are problems that are encountered with that that demand our resources be spent by the police department. Similar to this business, we likened it to liquor in that this business is largely all cash business, and there is... Will be what normally is an illegal substance, marijuana, except for those that have these new cards. So, that, we feel, can potentially attract a problem. And so, our police department, and Chief Gunther can speak to this a little bit more, will probably be demanding more of our police resources on an annual basis than other businesses. Say a retail business that we charge fifty dollars for a business license. The demand on our resources is a lot less in that instance than we suspect that it will be for a medical dispensary. And I don't know if Chief Gunther has anything else to add to that.
I think you summed it up very well. I will say that, again, we talked about this when we originally talked about medical cannabis coming to town. The concern isn't so much the individuals that are going there with legal authority to obtain it. My concern is those that will prey on those individuals that are going there to legally obtain it. This isn't all cash business at this point. This is also an illegal product to everyone else that doesn't possess it, who wants it. So, we will be spending an exorbitant amount of time in and around the area ensuring that the people that are going there are doing so and getting what they need safely. We are on the low end with this thirty-five hundred dollar fee when you consider that Displanes just passed a fifteen thousand dollar impact fee. The city of Schaumburg just looked at a seventy-five thousand dollar impact fee. And the city of Displanes looked at a hundred thousand dollar fee. Elk Row Village, I'm sorry, one hundred thousand dollar fee. So, we are on the low end when it comes to that particular fee. And using, like we said, a comparison with another business that there is with the M2 liquor license at thirty-five hundred dollars, it seemed to be fair. So, that's why we got to that number. But I do anticipate there will be a larger impact on our public safety, for sure.
Okay.
I have a few comments.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Kim?
Thank you. I had a question, since this is largely considered an impact fee. Is impact... Is police service not included in real estate taxes that would be for that building?
Want me to do that? Yeah, I believe that they do pay for those services. However, there are other things that we have that impose a large... Larger amount of impact on those services. And we are allowed by state law to look at those impacts on in particular services and charge appropriately. I wouldn't call this an impact fee, per se, as those others, I said, are much more exorbitant. Those are actually titled as impact fees.
So, we wouldn't consider this one an impact fee, but it's just like a business license fee?
We will be spending... We are anticipating spending more time at this particular... Much like you talked liquor licenses, the video gaming. Unfortunately, we just did our checks this evening and had a violation on our video gaming. So, we do that quite regularly. And we... Our services will be required in those areas, if for anything, to ensure that they're being operated safely.
So, the cost, then, for conducting those checks every so often to make sure they comply, that's not part of... Like, you know, with the liquor stores. Actually, first, can I ask, like, how is it that we compared this medicinal cannabis facility to only liquor store and gaming, as opposed to pharmacy or any other thing we could have compared it to in town? We chose liquor store and gaming.
Well, because I do believe that the impact on our resources is going to be... Well, because I do believe that the impact on our resources is going to be similar to that as a liquor license and/or video gaming. It's a, it's something that people want that not everyone is entitled to. And we have to, we have to realize that not everybody out there is a good person and is going to follow those rules that are set in place. So we want to make sure that those that are entitled to go there and to obtain it for medical purposes are able to do so safely. Security links are direct to the police department so that we have the ability to, again, provide the most service, best service possible to those people coming there. There's going to be people from all over the county essentially and all over northern Cook County that could potentially be coming to our area. It's going to be a large amount of traffic in that area.
Also, I just wanted to ask, we did all decide to put the zoning in industrial and, no, we didn't, what, where did? Okay, okay, so the majority of the voter decided that industrial thing was the most appropriate place for this. Would it be less of a concern in terms of, you know, your decision for how often you'd have to go out there and the safety of the people going? Had we chosen, like, you know, commercial, brightly lit, like more bodies type?
No, quite the opposite. When we talk about an impact, to use the word that was thrown out earlier, we don't want the impact to be on our residential areas and/or our highly populated areas if there's going to be an impact. When we talk about public safety and providing security, if we know what we're providing security to and to who, it makes our chances much better of keeping that place safe. When you put it into a highly populated commercial area, it now confuses that, that issue with those that are there to get, you know, go to the supermarket or to the medical marijuana facility. It confuses that. We've now put it in a place where it's safe, we're able to, we know exactly what's going on there, but it also doesn't have that, the disparate impact on our residential areas and/or our commercial areas.
These couldn't open in residential areas, though.
No, true, but we want to keep it as far away from those areas as possible.
So I, I do hear what you're saying regarding, you know, you want to make sure, I mean, there are people out there who try to skirt the system or, who are dishonest. But truth be told, if people want to get it, can't they get it illegally? Thank you, police chief, illegally, but with less trouble than trying to rob someone who took it out of the dispensary?
If people want to do something bad, they're going to do it. But I'm not going to sit back and make it easy for them. That's my job, to ensure that we do everything we can to keep people safe. And again, I, I can't stress enough, my concern isn't the people that are going there to get their medicinal marijuana. I do believe they will be targets. They will be the sheep. And we need to make sure that we keep them as protected as possible.
So while I'm in agreement with you, and I would be okay with somewhat of a larger license fee than, you know, a grocery store, but I feel that $3,500 is still too high. And that would, I guess, maybe be my only opinion if anyone else agrees, but.
Well, I wanted to just throw it out there. Those numbers are awfully high on these other communities. It sounds, seems to me just the opposite. Are we leaving money on the table?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Are we leaving a lot of money on the table that whoever gets a license here and gets approved and wants to move to Mundaline and do this, that they would be more than willing to pay three, four, five times the $3,500? Are we leaving?
Yeah.
I also want to note that we will not, as previously stated, collect any sales tax on this.
Yep.
We will not get sales tax. So $3,500 a year by a business that will make tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, at the cost of our public safety and our public service, really you're blocking at $3,500? I think Mayor Lentz might be right. We might be a little low here. If other villages are charging, you know, $75,000, maybe we should be charging $20,000. So, you know, we're going to have a little more, so I would be careful blocking at $3,500 because it might come back with more.
Is there a threat?
No, I'm just saying, we can come back with more.
Okay.
Trustee Simple?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I too agree that this $3,500 is, it's a ludicrously low number for some of these other communities, what they're charging. What I see happening too, and I don't think I'm the only one here, is this initial legalization of medical marijuana is basically the camel's nose under the tent. The laws will be loosened up and this is going to evolve to be, you know, possibly legalized or decriminalized at the state level. It'll turn into recreational use. Charlie, are we going to be stuck with this tiny $3,000 fee as this medical marijuana industry mushrooms into a multi, multimillion dollar industry as it has in some of the other states that have started off much like Illinois is doing? Are we locked into this? Can we raise this fee up over time if we believe it to be grossly under charge, which I believe we are right now, right out of the starting blocks?
No, I, I, I don't think you're bound to this amount. It can be increased and it can be decreased. So that's at the discretion of the board from time to time as circumstances may, in your judgment, warrant a change.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Trustee Sullivan?
Yeah, evidently the statute does not provide for the collection of, of a sales tax. And evidently that, that's not hard to understand because this is a cash business. The vendor for medical marijuana doesn't, can't negotiate a, a check or a credit card payment. But as a home rule community, do we, we have an option to apply a home rule sales tax to medical marijuana?
I, I don't think so.
No.
The, the, medical marijuana law does contain restrictions as to both home rule communities and non-home rule communities. And so you, you have to be governed by what the state law provides.
Well, you know, a vial of antibiotic pays a one and three-quarter percent sales tax. And we are prohibited from applying our home rule sales tax to food and groceries, or food and medicine. But it would be something to consider and perhaps the statute could be changed.
It would be, yes.
If, as trustee Simple says, and perhaps he's right, this is something that will evolve into a much larger potential business than is provided for now.
Okay, so let's try. I'll make a motion to pass an ordinance requiring a business license for medical cannabis dispensaries and cultivation centers.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Kim. We seem to have some fuzziness on this amount.
Well, I think that we don't have fuzziness exactly on the amount, and that's why I made this motion. I'd like to see if it carries as written. And if we have fuzziness, it won't pass and then we can discuss it.
Well, now's the time when we discuss it now. You made the motion, it was seconded, now we have discussion.
Okay.
You went to discussion before you made the motion, so we have a part two before us. We have two, apparently you're, you wanted it 35 or less, $3,500 or less. We have two that appear to be, want it to be higher. Trustee Sullivan and trustees Meyer, what are, if we could ask?
Why, I think that an initial licensing fee of $3,500 is going to be acceptable, in my view, as long as in the future, should we discover that this is a much more burdensome development than we suspect initially, we can raise that fee. And we, we may well pursue other sources of revenue collection from the sale of this product.
Okay. Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, I agree with the $3,500 as now, based on the information that we know, which is equivalent to the alcoholic licensing and also the, you know, video gambling and that. And if there is, you know, extraordinary demands, we can revisit that at any time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to reiterate, trustee, excuse me, Attorney Marino is the one that suggested this dollar based upon the liquor license fee.
No, I, I, I did, this ordinance was prepared by Smith and Law. I did review the ordinance and was satisfied with it, but I, I think the $3,500 doesn't come from the attorneys. That, that, that's a policy decision for the board to determine. The, the attorney will only get involved if he finds law that.
$500, so they understand that it's not cast in stone. They should know that we could amend that amount at, at will, but it wouldn't hurt to put it in the ordinance.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Thank you. If it ever became recreational or where they could take check, credit card, other forms of payment, does, at any point past those lines, does it become a revenue generator at all for sales tax? Never?
Well, if this, sorry, if the state determines that they want to, that it's a taxable item, then it becomes a revenue generator, yes. So in Colorado, in, they, it's taxable?
Yeah, I think the difference is that under medicinal, it's considered a pharmaceutical, and that's where that 1% tax comes from, and that's why it stops. Once you move into the recreational side, it becomes recreational, no longer pharmaceutical in that sense, and then you should be able to tax it at normal rates.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Hold up. Are we going to add that we can increase that amount?
It's, it's annual, it says, I mean, I don't really think that.
Like trustee Sullivan had said?
If you read, let me just pause the page. It says it's an annual renewable, and I think that if you have to renew something annually, you understand that the price can change annually. I don't think that we need to add that.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
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 All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim? I already called Kim, sorry. Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I got these, staff printed up these great shop local Mundaline stickers. And on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and Friday after Thanksgiving and Saturday, I distributed them with the help of Kristen Russell from the EDC to small businesses and restaurants and service providers throughout Mundaline. These are stickers, and so as you go and shop and support, they say shop local Mundaline. As you go and support our local small businesses, you can get a sticker and wear it proudly showing that you supported all our small businesses throughout town. If you're a small business owner and you've run out, we do, trustee Kim has some and I have some, you can call and ask and we'll make sure that you get some if you've run out. And again, we just ask residents, as you're in these places of business, that you let them know that you're supporting them, ask for a sticker, show them that you already have one, and remember to shop local. Thank you.
Can all of us have those, rather than just certain trustees, so as like, when all of us are shopping at Mundaline like we do, that we can give them to the businesses that we're all shopping at?
Yes.
So it's not just, not just trustee Voss and trustee Kim handing out these stickers?
Well, if you want to go around to stores, that's great. I didn't.
I spend plenty of money in Mundaline. I'd be happy to hand these things out.
I, I didn't say, I, in a two-day period, I tried to hit like everywhere in a very short timeframe. And then I thought that we had given them all out. And then I found out that we had a few hundred that are left. So it's a small quantity and I didn't mean to have a monopoly on it. I just, in a short period of time, really tried to hit every, every business that was open that I could get to that was a small business. So if you have some that you feel you want to make sure that they got and they might have been left out, I'm happy to share, but just know that we, this is all we have, so they're not for us to keep. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Voss. Moving on to the Communication and Marketing Committee report, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No motions tonight, but a couple of updates. The winter newsletter is going to be distributed next week, but, and the winter banners are going to be installed this week, so you should be seeing them around town. Those are brand new. And then there's this, it says Toys for Tots Final Push Event Tavern on 60 on December 13th at 6:00 PM. It says the mayor and the U.S. Marines will be attending, and Tavern on 60 is looking, looking forward to seeing more village representation if anyone's free that night and can go. 6:00 PM on December 13th. It's also open to the public, so all residents are encouraged to come, bring a toy. It is Toys for Tots. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Abernathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda tonight, and I think Mr. Boucher has said all he has to say this evening. So I have nothing to report, but thank you.
Very good. Other reports, there is an item on here for vehicle purchase for the Building Department. Mr. Labado?
Yeah, we weren't sure where to put this because we had budgeted this under Public Works, I'm not sure quite how that happened, but there's money in the budget for the purchase of a vehicle for the Building Department. And so this is simply a resolution waiving the bids, but it's my understanding the vehicle's being purchased through, not the state, but.
Northwest Municipal Conference.
North, yeah.
Has the joint purchase program through Northwest Municipal Conference.
So it's technically waiver of bid, but it is another program that does get competitive pricing for these vehicles.
Okay, so we need a motion to adopt a resolution waiving bids and authorizing a purchase order for the purchase of a Ford Explorer from Bretman Ford, Grandview, Illinois, amount of $26,882.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Voss. Any other discussion on this? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Very good. Any other reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Clerk Meyer?
Yeah, I'd just like to report out on the old Village Hall study. We're moving along. We had a meeting in December and we've received a variety of information and we already have a draft outline of the report that we'll be working on in January and February, and that report will be presented to the board in one of the March meetings.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much.
Work is moving forward and going along.
Thank you very much. That's great news. Anyone else, other reports? Okay, let's move to Schedule Business, item 10.
Just checking.
The omnibus vote items. We have items one through six. Does any trustee wish to pull one or more of these items?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor, I'd like number four off.
Trustee Voss wants to address number four. Anyone else? Okay, then I need a motion to pass omnibus, omnibus vote items one, two, three, five, and six.
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. Trustee Voss, item four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item four is a motion to adopt a resolution approving Rainy Land Investments LLC's request for reimbursement and payment with respect to landscape buffer improvements in the Lake Ridge Town Home Development. So Lake Ridge Town Home Development has a. So Lake Ridge Town Home Development has a, has a few problems that they have not, that they haven't resolved sufficiently, let's say that. So just for clarification, for the residents, this money is only for landscaping and we're not, it has nothing to do with existing problems regarding land ownership or HOA issues that might be there, correct? Okay, and so we've inspected that they've done landscaping and we are giving them money that we had received from the CN for the purpose of landscaping. Staff has verified that they've done the landscaping and so we're just giving them, paying them for what they've done, having nothing at all to do with the existing nine tenants, homeowners. Okay? I just want to make that really clear. The nine existing homeowners are a little nervous. So with that being said, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Any other discussion on item four? Okay, Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. This takes us to Village Staff Reports. Village Administrator, Mr. Labado?
I had something I wanted to advise the board and I guess I should have written it down, so I have no report tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Village Attorney, Mr. Marino?
Mayor, I have no report this evening, but I understand executive session will be needed on several items. Pending litigation, land acquisition, personnel and minutes.
All of it right there, yes. The whole shot. That's correct. We'll do that, okay? Okay, thank you. Next up, Village Clerk.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the filing period for nominating petitions for the April 7th, 2015 consolidated election begins next Monday, December 15th at 8:00 AM here at Village Hall.
I remember. Yeah, I'm going to go back to this. I just want to mention to Trustee Kim, she had mentioned about the special meeting on the 15th. When, we have special meeting that's for specific purposes. And so there are two items that are being considered at that meeting. The first one is the KSN lease and the second item is the Route 53. So I wanted to make it clear if there was an expectation to put something else on the agenda, we'd probably need to know that tonight to make that announcement if there was something else.
Wouldn't it be 48 hours prior?
No. This, only because it's a special meeting, not normally scheduled throughout the year.
And we don't need to pay any bills that night?
You gave me the authority to pay those.
I know we did, but if we're having a meeting, couldn't we just pay them?
No.
Okay.
There'll only be two items. Adam's looking at me and he says three. What's the third?
We have a Pipeline Solutions Glenbrook Excavating payment request that we wanted to get on the 15th.
Oh.
Because Chuck was unable last week to complete that work to get it on the December 8th meeting.
Yes, I would agree.
Three things.
Three things. We will add.
You'd have to make a motion now.
I'll make that motion.
Because you've already passed the resolution calling the special meeting and the resolution spells out specifically what those items are that can be considered. Now, you don't have to do this by resolution, you can do it by motion. So if someone wishes to make a motion to add an additional item to be considered at the special meeting on December 15th, that can be done, but it has to be done before this meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?
Would someone like to make that?
Can I make a motion that Charlie just said to add what Mr. Boucher had asked us to add to the bill pay list for the meeting on December 15th?
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Trustee Meyer. Discussion? All right, Clerk, can you state what that is?
We're paying money, Ed needs to know.
Authorization for payment to Glenbrook Excavating through the CDBG program because the general contractor defaulted and is no longer in business. So the subcontractors are looking to receive payment and we had to work with the bonding company to do so.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. The filing period for the petitions starts the 15th, but when's the end date?
The 22nd at 5:00 PM, correct? It's my first time, so I believe it to be the end of office hours.
Yes, and when do, does it start December 15th at 8, I don't know what time?
Eight, 8:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarified, the start and the end. Thank you.
Okay. That was it for Village Staff Reports, I believe? Now, when we come out of executive session, do we expect some action? I believe we do.
Yes.
Yes, we do, okay? So at this point, I need a motion to recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C11, land acquisition pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C5, personnel pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C1, and minutes pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C21.
So moved.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy? Yes. Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion to reconvene the Village Board meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Trustee Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Okay, Clerk, please take attendance.
Present. Kim?
Here.
Meyer? Simple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
I don't even know what I'm saying.
Very good. We have one item of business to wrap up the Village Board meeting and I need a motion to, to pass a resolution authorizing an amendment to the real estate sales contract to purchase 498 North Seymour Avenue in Mundaline, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Voss. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Motion carries. All right, and that concludes the business that we needed to do. At this point, I would need a motion to adjourn the Village Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Bye-bye.